Well, good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to our January-
This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to welcome you to our January 12th, 2023 Lander County Commissioners Meeting. It's also available teleconference at Austin Courthouse Commission Office on 122 Main Street. All items on this agenda are approximate. Consideration of items may require more or less time than is scheduled. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussing relating to an item- discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Public comment is designated for discussion only. Public- the public has the opportunity to address the commission in any manner not appearing on the agenda. However, no action may be taken on any matter raised until the matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Additionally, public comment may be heard on any item listed on the agenda. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any agenda item at the Lander County Commissioners Board meeting. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person at the discretion of the commission. Please note that public- that the public body may interpret the opening meeting- sorry, may interrupt the open meeting and exclude the public for the purpose of having an attorney-client discussion of potential and existing litigation, and that's pursuant to NRS 241.0153B2. So I'll call this meeting to order. And Kathy, or Patty, would you listen to the pledge?
Please join me in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence. All right, Lander County Commission may break for lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15 PM. Any agenda, item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commission reports. We'll start with you, Patty.
Thank you. We did have the Austin Airport Advisory Board meeting on Monday. They took a look at their budget so they can have that in timely. One of the things on the agenda was actually lease agreement for hangars, and we had discussed a little bit about that. We found our rules and regulations, which go way, way back, and apparently, we did address that for hangars, but we didn't address if you have a hangar, own it yourself, and you're just leasing the property from us. And the reason it wasn't addressed, because way back then BLM owned it, we didn't even have the property. So now that we have the property, we are going to take a look at the rules and regulations and address the property. Because the only hangars we have out there are three hangars that are owned individually. So they're sitting on our Lander County property, and we'll be taking a look at that next month.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Kathy, anything?
I have not attended any meetings.
Okay, I have nothing to report. Jared?
I went to the public lands meeting the other day, but there was nothing really new.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, Mike?
I attended the hospital board last night, and I want to report that something very positive was reported. I'm going to read it as it was reported. I said, "This week, Becker's Healthcare", which is a national reporting system, reported 50 rural hospitals with the best margins. And this is in the country. Battle Mountain General Hospital was listed as 39th in the nation. So what did we figure last night? How many hospitals were evaluated? Four thousand?
Fourteen hundred critical access hospitals that were listed margin over rural hospitals.
So kudos to that, and that's a big compliment to the Lander County. Oh.
Can I go through it again? No, you're fine. So, kudos to the hospital. That was a nice thing to be part of and get a listen to that presentation. Thank you. We'll move on to staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended.
Good morning, Commission. A few meetings that I attended that will be coming back in front of you probably in the near future. One is February 9th. We're going to have ORMAT endow, and a whole bunch of other parties involved show up here and speak openly on the effects of geothermal and sage grouse habitat. So I know that that's kind of been a pressing topic, and I know Ms. Anchoe had brought that up when Mr. Nichols from ORMAT had attended and spoke on it. So that will be coming on the 9th. I did have a meeting with Marigold and the expansion, the Valmy Expansion Project, just north of town here. That is just the same plan of operation that was in 2015 when they purchased that property from, I believe it was Newmont at the time. So they've- that's just they're working within that and expanding within their plan of operations. So no additional dewatering, no real big changes other than the expansion of that project. And then I did meet with John Shurvy on the Lansville Passage, and it looks like me and him will be working a lot together here in the near future, and there's going to be some things that he's learning as well that have to come down from the higher offices on how that exchange is going to happen and how much of this land this county's going to want to purchase, if any, or if we're going to want to leave that all as kind of the- like we did with the golf course for public purpose. So that'll be more decisions to come to you guys. Other than that, I have nothing else to add.
All right, thank you, Bert. We'll move into public comment. For non-agenda items only, persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any non-agenda item at the board meeting, if any. And discussion of those comments, at the discretion of the board. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person. Again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comment based upon time, place of manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Do we have any public comment? Morning, Jason.
Good morning. Good morning, Jason Blake, for the record. I hope you don't mind if I stand.
No, please.
But I'm here from the hospital district, and we want to recognize Kathy for her service on the hospital board over the past four years. So we have a little plaque here for her, and it reads, "With our deepest appreciation, we hereby honor Kathy Schwartz Anchoe with this award in recognition of your years of guidance, leadership, and commitment serving as a member of the Battle Mountain General Hospital Board of Directors. Years of service, 2019 through 2022." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate her service, and she has been instrumental in some of the great growth that we have had over the years. So.
Thank you, Jason.
I have public comment, and trust me, this is more painful for you to watch than it is for me. So the disability that I have is very progressive, just even from yesterday, from today, my difficulty speaking. And so there has been comment about me trying to pick who was going to replace me when I could no longer do this job. And I want to make sure the community knows that is the least of my worries. Because what I have is it was not- I will not be long standing with it. I'm not feeling sorry for myself, but I'm going to stay into this job as long as I physically can. I enjoy this, and I appreciate the hospital doing that. I've struggled horribly back and forth with those issues. Truly, I have. And it wasn't a political thing. It was an emotional thing that I struggled with. And so please know that when I say I'm not trying to figure out who's replacing me, I'm truly- I do not care, because by the time I'm there, it will not make any difference. This is- I'm trying to worry about my family and get my things in order for when that comes. And that's not to have anyone feel sorry for me, because I'm fine with where I'm at. Just your patience is all that I ask, because it is debilitating. And when I get to that point, I will stop. So I just ask for your patience, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Kathy. Do we have any more public comment? Okay, we'll move into the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the board of county commissioners with one action, without extensive discussion. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available at a nominal charge. One, approval of January 12th, 2023 Agenda Notice. Two, approval of November 16th, 2022 Meeting Minutes. Three, approval of December 8th, 2022 Meeting Minutes. Four, approval of December 22nd, 2022 Meeting Minutes. Five, approval of January 3rd, 2023 Special Meeting Minutes. And number six, approval of payroll change requests.
I make a motion that we approve number one, the Agenda Notice, and number three, December 8th Meeting Minutes, and number six, the approval of payroll change request. And for the record, November 16th Minutes, we did approve in December. So that comes off too.
Okay.
But the motion is for the three.
Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Passage unanimously. So we'll move into item one, Commissioners. For discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove payment of bills. We have some here we need to pull out. We have check number 218180 for Ms. Anchoe. We have check number 218149 for Ms. Waits. And we have check number 218152 and 218273 for myself.
I make a motion, we approve the balance of the checks minus those four.
Aye, is that fair?
Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor, say-
I have a question, Brian.
Yes, sorry.
On that two, it's to vendor, it's to the McShane. Is that 11,000 what we're approving later on in the- for item number six? So it shows McShane with a payment of 1,500.
Okay, if you need to discuss-
You want to just pull it?
We need to pull it if you want to discuss.
Yeah, pull that check number. Just tell me what the check number is. It should be clear to the right-hand side of the bill.
3237. No?
No.
Yeah, that's it.
Is that right?
It's an EFT number. It's paid electronically.
Oh, so that is the correct number?
Yeah.
And then we'll also pull check number 3237.
Okay, I'm in my motion to pay all the bills minus those five that were identified.
Aye, is that fair?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the bills. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Passage unanimously.
I'll make a motion, we approve check number 218180.
All will second that motion. So we have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
I will abstain, it's to my employer.
Okay.
I make a motion, we approve check number 218273 and 218152.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, whoever's not in favor, say nay. I oppose, it's made to my employer. Okay. And then we have, I'll make a motion for check number 218149.
All seconded.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I abstain, it's my traveling expense. Thank you.
Okay. And then we have check number 3237. You want- would you have questions on that?
I'm asking on that, so on agenda item number six is the McShane, and with that 11,000 as a retainer fee, so I'm asking if that check is pertinent to that.
No. So the 7,000 of that 11,000 was previously approved for the opioid video that they're going to do here in town for a local kid that had passed away from an overdose. And then the 4,000 is the monthly retainer that we've already on. So that does not pertain to what's on the agenda currently.
Okay, so do we-
With that, I'll make a motion, we approve check number 3237.
Okay, do we have a second?
All seconded.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so we'll move. Let me see, do we need to wait two minutes? Or ordinance, is that advertised at 9:15?
Yep.
Okay, so wait just a couple of minutes. All right, so we'll move into item two. Public hearing for discussion and possible action to modify and/or approve/disapprove the adoption of ordinance 2022-02, amending Lander County Code Title 10, Chapter 4, amending statutes adopted by reference and adding violation penalty.
I just have one question legally, Counselor. We did approve all this, and of course, our previous district attorney wrote it all up. But I just wondered, since we actually are approving the ordinance today, is it okay to have Ted's name on it, his district attorney, since he's not today?
I was mentioning that to people. I don't think it matters whose name is on it at this point, because he's the one that approved and drafted it up to them. But when it gets signed, it's got to have- it should be my name on there, since I'll be the one signing it.
Okay, so we'll need to have that corrected.
So if we can make the motion, then we'll just address it that way?
Yeah.
Okay.
May have to do that on several others.
Yeah.
Yes.
And Bill, should we read the change into the record? Do we need to do that, or?
We don't need to for an ordinance, do we? Just a resolution.
I was just asking.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the adoption of ordinance 2022-02, amending the Lander County Code Title 10, Chapter 4. It amends the statutes adopted by our reference and is adding a violation penalty, and also authorize our district attorney to sign as to the form and legality, our current district attorney.
All seconded.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment on the issue? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. Passage unanimously. Okay, so what do we do? So this one is scheduled at 9:30? If you'd like, you could skip all of, you know, down to item six and take care of some of the other. Yeah, we just got to- we just need to make sure that we're done by 9:30. Okay, so let's- we're going to skip items three, four, and five. Those have to be presented at the exact time on the agenda. So we'll go into item six. For discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the Public Relations Consulting Agreement between Lander County and McShane Public Relations Consultant for a monthly retainer at the rate of 4,000 per month.
And so I put this on the agenda. This is something that is within my budget to approve, but I figure it's so much money that it's worthy of bringing back before the commission. McShane has been working with us. They've given us some really good rates, and this has been the best rate we could find. For example, with the opioid video that we're going to put out, the next closest we could find was 15,000, and they came in at 7,000. So that's why it's on the agenda, is more for transparency than anything. And if you guys don't want to do it, we don't have to. But it's entirely up to you guys.
So they have currently been doing our newsletter?
Correct.
And you checked with some other companies to do our newsletter previous to this, I'm assuming?
Yes. When we first went out to get- to figure out how or who would put these together for us, we got quotes, and McShane was recommended to us by our counsel down in Vegas. And that's why- that's how we ended up with them to begin with. But we did get quotes from others at that time as well. And I believe the next closest was $6,000. I can pull them quotes if you guys would like and present them later if need be.
So we're- yeah, I had the question like our current commissioner there on the $7,000, because it- I wondered what the 7,000 was again when I read the contract. So it says a one-time fee, but you explained it was for our opioid.
It is.
But I really don't know what we would be doing, another one-time fee for a video?
No, no, there's not. We aren't getting two one-time fees. It is- they just incorporated that into this contract as opposed to billing us separately, so we could get the discounted rate.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Kathy.
Okay.
So the contract wouldn't include making a video for us? I mean, if we-
No, that's what they did. They included it in this contract for the video, so we would get the discounted rate.
Oh, got you, okay.
So we don't have another 7,000?
We don't have another 7,000, no.
All we have is the 4,000 per month, right?
Yes, and just to be clear, that's the 7,000 that we're taking out of the opioid money that we received from the state.
Right, I know we approved that with the other.
Yes.
Yeah, I remember we did that in December, actually.
Correct.
I think that was on our minutes. But I do have, one of the next pages on determination. It says the contract concludes automatically within 90 days.
What page is that on, Kathy?
They don't have page numbers, so start with the contract as 1, 2, 3.
It's under termination, yeah.
It says the contract concludes automatically within 90 days. If both parties agree, they may extend the contract with the same terms or modify as an addendum to this agreement. I'm going, that's very confusing. We're only hiring them for three months?
No, no, we definitely aren't only hiring them for three months. I would have to get clarification on them from that.
Yeah, we have to.
My understanding is that we have 90 days to approve this contract or else that they aren't going to offer us the same deal. But maybe it does not read that way when you just read that.
Counselor, did you look at this for the form and legality, and are we okay with that?
Well, I'm okay with it, because you still- I mean, they can- you can both agree to extend it. I mean, normally, I try to put in contracts that I draft that they will automatically continue, you know, because we have that 30-day out that we always have. And it just automatically renews. So I did that for Brian's sake, even back in the day when you guys were having me review every contract, because I knew that there might be a time when people forgot about the contracts and let them go, because that had happened so many times, so that I just had them automatically renew. So I think it's a bad idea in general, but there's nothing wrong with it.
Well, I agree with passage. The way it reads is that basically it says in 90 days, this contract will basically-
Yeah.
-terminate.
Should we get this cleared up before we go any further, please?
Because then we're approving a contract every 90 days.
You bet.
Yeah. So do we want to?
They have to agree, obviously, which is why I didn't want to upset an apple cart.
I also had a question on the Public Relations Plan, which they are going to deliver to us. Are they doing a full public relations on that?
I don't know that this is- I think what we're doing is we're considering full public relations, because we're including every- everything in the county. Anything that anybody wants to put in there, they send to us, we add to it. So I think that-
Well, it says they're going to work on one and deliver it to us.
Well, that's part of this thing. Everything that they do is part of a public relations plan. So it goes into- it goes into a file that if we ever cancel this contract, they give us everything they've ever done for us. And that's part of this contract.
Except their notes, et cetera.
Whereas a lot of contracts, they consider a lot of their work proprietary, so they won't give you the work that they've done. Where in this, we're asking them to put everything together. If we ever want to take this back in-house and bring somebody on board to do this, they have to give us everything that's due them. Nothing's proprietary. Everything that they've done for us is ours, and we own it.
Except their notes and such.
No, everything is- everything is supposed to be- everything is supposed to be ours, is what the agreement is supposed to say.
No, they had an exception in there.
Can you clarify? I'm not sure where the exception-
Well, I don't remember. I read it a long time ago, and I've read a lot of stuff for today, so let's take a quick look.
Because you're talking under three confidentiality?
Yeah.
Because of what they've done, is they've created call logs, they've created email lists. All of these things come directly back to Lander County to where they're-
We own them.
We own them.
Yeah, clients shall retain exclusive possession of and right to all names, mailing, email addresses, telephone, and other contact information, and all other information and data used. So they have the right to keep everything too and to use that, like all our-
Well, we're the client.
We're the client.
We're the client.
County emails and everything?
That's all ours.
Okay.
That's all ours.
So we're okay with that? Well, do we want to defer it until we get these things corrected?
Or we can approve it based on the correction? How do you want to do it? What's the best way, Bill?
I would approve it with the corrections, because if we're going to stop every single time, we'll never get things done because if there's a minor correction.
Yeah, but it'll hinge on them being okay with the correction.
Of course.
Yeah, so they will make the correction when it's not valid.
Okay.
I would rather have it correct being brought back in front of us.
Well, I would rather if we approved it, because this will shut down the video production and everything else. They're planning to be out here the 15th, I believe, this weekend, to start shooting. If we- and we can always do that separate. We might have to come back for the 7,000, because that's-
It shouldn't affect that, Bert, because you already signed that for the video for the opium.
Yes, but they have it- they have that wrote into this contract.
Not opium, opioid, sorry.
Yes, they have that wrote into this contract.
They give us a discounted rate because of the contract, right?
Yes, so if they won't agree to whatever terms you guys put on this, then I will be back before you guys with the change of terms or whatever else may be changed that they don't agree to.
Okay.
And we can continue forward with the video production. If not, then I don't know how that will move forward on the video production. But I did sign the 7,000. It's just incorporated into this contract, so I'm not sure how that affects one- affects them.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
So Bert, earlier you said, so with this 4,000 a month, that's to keep them on retainer for the year and get our quarterly's, our newsletters and stuff?
Correct.
Has there been discussion about taking that 48,000 and creating this, like a position or offer stipends or to an additional employee, a local person that makes the wage and that, to where we have a public relations that could do the social media and do more than just quarterly? I mean, with that, I mean, that'd be a pretty decent start spot to use our money for- to do this locally within our own- within our own people.
I did- I did bring that up, Mike. But by the time we hire somebody, we pay the benefits, we pay the perks, we're- I think we're talking quite a bit more. That's- I mean, when you get somebody that's qualified in like PR.
Okay, do we put numbers to that? And do you have something on that to show?
Oh, we can put- we can definitely put together what a position. I think Lakin could probably tell you roughly off the top of her head, put her on the spot, what a single employee cost. But I- we did run some of them- some of them numbers, and then we also talked about hiring somebody locally. But when you start advertising and start trying to grab all these different email addresses and phone numbers and sending text messages and everything that goes with that, it becomes pretty technical. So we wanted to start off with something that had a chance of being successful by reaching enough people. We didn't want to dump a bunch of money into something that everybody looked at and said, "This is terrible work." You know, what would they put out?
Currently, this is coming out of your budget, right? And so we don't have the other one budgeted. But that is something to look at, and we have a 30-day out, you know, after our 90 days, of course. So if it's something that the commission wants to look at-
We don't maybe a future agenda item?
Yes, absolutely.
Just definitely look at it before budget.
Yeah.
So if we elect to go that, right?
And now that we do have the groundwork, it may be something worth considering of bringing somebody local that this is maybe their expertise. And now that we do have the groundwork, it may be something worth considering of bringing somebody local that this is maybe their expertise. I know there are some people that have some of that, but we have the. We have the rights to everything we already paid for and maybe that's the foundation somebody local would need to, uh, to grab that and run with it.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I say with that is, is that we're adding another position, right? We're making government bigger. Where this, we can get out anytime we want. It, it might be a good idea if we found somebody that we could give to them as an extra duty. If that's possible, we're not adding another position, you know, and maybe give them a stipend for doing it. That might be an idea too, so. Alright, so do we have a motion? Well, I'll make a motion, yep. I'll make a motion that we approve the public relations consulting area between Lander County McShane Public Relations Consultant. For a monthly retainer at a rate of four thousand per month, uh, contingent upon the changes discussed. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Passage unanimously. Okay, so we're.
Just because.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Childwood, a name.
Real quick, can I get clarification on exactly the changes? Sorry.
Yeah, that, yeah, we don't want to be renegotiating every ninety days. We just want our normal thirty.
I think you have public comment.
Oh, sorry. Uh, thirty day out. So counselor, we're almost on our public hearing time. What should I do?
Go to the public hearing.
Okay, can I, can I come back to you and we'll, and we'll, we'll come back to this item? We'll come back to this item. So we're gonna open up, uh, item three, um, here in eight seconds. Okay, so a public hearing for discussion and possible action to modify and or dis- approve, disapprove the adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-two. Dash oh-three amending Lander County Code Title Ten, Chapter Eight to include school zone designation, speed limit and signs.
Okay, we have discussed this previously, of course, so it's just our, uh, our ordinance change, so, um. I will make a motion that we approve the adoption of ordinance two zero two two dash zero three. Amending Lander County Code Title Ten, Chapter Eight to include school zone designation, speed limit and signs. And authorize our new district attorney to sign.
And we have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment on the issue? Okay, all in favor, say aye. And opposed, nay. Passage unanimously. Okay, so we'll go back to, uh, number six. So we'll just open that back up. So I'm sorry I didn't ask for public comment. Do we have public comment on the issue? No, you're good. Green is good.
Green's good, okay. Teresa Ryan, and I will try to make this quick. On January third, the eighteenth congressional, uh, congress tried to meet and certify. Members. It didn't happen in the house. It didn't happen because House Freedom Caucus members did not let that happen. Now, there are six members of that caucus that are mentioned in the McShane website. By name as clients. I'm a little bit concerned, no, I'm a lot concerned, that even the appearance. Even the appearance of our tax dollars being used for political purposes is concerning. Even the appearance. And I really cut this short, but I, hopefully I make my point that. Please consider the appearance of using our tax dollars. And I talked to you on Monday, but, yeah. It's a concern.
So the concern is actually, um, the history of the McShane. Company.
Correct.
And that they appear, they appear totally. Totally to the right.
It's, it, not only are they political, but it's extreme. They're extreme groups. On their website, they have, um, the organizations and one of them is the House Freedom Action. So if the House Freedom Caucus would be a noun, I would say the House Freedom Caucus is a verb and they work together. It's, it's, it's something to consider.
Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so. We, you voted nay, right?
I did.
And then, uh, so it passed and then we'll move on, okay? Is, is there any more public comment on the issue before we move on? Okay, we'll move into item seven. Uh, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove a request from the Humboldt River Basin Water Authority for Lander County to contribute. An amount not to exceed thirty-five hundred to match a William N. Pennington Foundation Grant Award of sixty thousand. To the Desert Research Institute for Cloud Seeding Operations in the Humboldt River Basin, uh, Santa Rosa and Ruby Mountains this winter season.
Now, Commissioner, I did, uh, speak with Jeff Fontaine and, uh. They were, they would like to see five thousand dollars, um, if they could. I know they're a little bit short, but they're, they're trying to continue to fill these cloud seeding machines. And place them on mountaintops around Lander County. I'm sure Commissioner, uh, Thomas can speak further to what the five thousand or the thirty-five hundred goes to. Because he sits on that board. Um, and if we need to re-agendize that for the additional twenty-five or hundred, then, uh. You know, we can do that, or what is it, fifteen hundred? I apologize, fifteen hundred.
Legally, legally, if we have an amount, I think we do have to agendize again. Is that correct, Counselor?
Yeah, because the state is not to exceed. What did we give them last?
Thirty-five hundred.
We gave them thirty-five hundred.
Uh, we could give them the thirty-five hundred if you so please and, and put it on the agenda again for the additional fifteen hundred. We could do that.
You bet. And I, and if that's what the commission, like, I just wanted you to be aware that they would like the five thousand if at all possible.
And the cloud seeding they did, uh, last time for us, it was, it was pretty effective, wasn't it? They made a lot of snow.
Right, and he's, he's got actually all the results in here if you read the snow equivalent and everything. Um, it's, it's, um. It's, it's very interesting. They, they put it by days and I, I didn't realize that it all. I guess I thought when you're cloud seeded, you're just cloud seeded and you don't, you have to wait for certain times of the weather and be there right then. And if you miss that opportunity, it's lost. So, um, I appreciate what they're doing. They really were very successful when you think about. What was accomplished on the information.
Question was asked real quick. I would agree that it'd be best to just pass it to the thirty-five hundred maximum and then re-agendize it. An example would be obviously, you know, with fifteen hundred bucks, nobody's gonna care that much, but supposing you suddenly decide you wanted to give them a hundred and fifty thousand. And somebody go, what the heck? I didn't know you were gonna do that. I would have been there to object. You know, some, it would be a little, a little, uh, too much. So that's a better way of dealing with it.
Off of his data, there was a interesting article in the Elko paper where he gave some of the, even more current results of, for, for our base and for. Winemucca to, to Elko and the movies and stuff. It was just in, date before yesterday, so it was very interesting.
Alright, I'll hear your motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve the request from the Humboldt River Basin Water Authority for us to contribute an amount of, um, thirty-five hundred dollars. To help with the match for the William N. Pennington Foundation Grant Award of sixty thousand to the Desert Research Institute for Cloud Seeding Operations. In the Humboldt River Basin this winter season.
I'll start.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Uh, all opposed, nay? Uh, is there any public comment on it? Okay, we'll move into item. Let's see here. We won't do that. Well, yeah, it's at nine forty-five, so we'll just take, uh, we'll take a five minute break. Okay, so we'll go back to business here.
This conference will now be recorded.
Sorry for the pause, guys. The time has to be exact for these public hearings, so a few more seconds.
I didn't expect, I know, I was like, that's the fastest we've ever gotten back to it.
Alright, guys, we'll move into item four, public hearing for discussion and possible action to modify and or approve, disapprove the adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh-four. Amending Lander County Code Title Five, Chapter Twenty, Section O-three-O to include locksmith and safe mechanics license or work permit. Do we have any discussion on it? Is there any public comment on the item? Okay, I will hear a motion. And then also state that, uh, that Bill will be signing as the district attorney. So we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, uh, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Passes unanimously. Okay, so we'll move into item. We'll move into item eight. Amen, uh, engineering for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove. Award to Lander County Civic Center retrofit project PWP dash LA dash two zero two three dash one one zero. Uh, number one was Core International Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed one million, one hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty cents. And two, Braemar Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents. And it's, uh, so it's recommended, number two is recommended for acceptance. Uh, gentlemen?
Good morning, Commissioners. Aaron Martinez for the record.
Don Prince, public works for the record.
Uh, Commissioners, you guys have received a recommendation for award toward the contract to Braemar Construction as the low bidder. After some additional information had come through, um, this project is being recommended for a table and rebid. Based on a few items. One of the items is, it's been brought to our attention that the contractor is not properly certified through the Nevada State Public Works. Uh, office. Uh, I believe the contractor is here today and can speak to you about that. Some of the finite components of that is that it's, it is questionable whether it is required prior to bidding or prior to award. It's one of those licenses that's on top of a contractor's license and what they do is, uh, they have to show that they've done public works projects in the past. And then they sign up with the Public Works Board and they get their certification. I believe the contractor is here today and I do believe they have that certification in hand. I'm not speaking for them. If you'd like to come on up, Dusty?
They may have that in, on hand. Our contract currently, our policies do not state anything about that particular certification. Um, so it is questionable whether it was required at bidding or at award. And we have not been able to nail that down if it was required to bidding, so my recommendation to Public Works is that we rebid the project. But I'll open the floor to the contractor and he can, uh, speak to that.
Good morning. Um, Dusty Ship, Braemar Construction. The, uh, license that, uh, we're referring to, the state public works license, um, had expired and we were in the process of renewing that. But it had not been issued as of bid opening date. Um, I do have it here. I do have a copy of it. It was issued on January ninth, four days after the bid opening date. I did call the state and ask them if it's required, cause it does not, is not clear in the NR statutes if it's required at. Bid opening versus, um, uh, you guys' award of the bid. But, um, uh, they said that, uh, there's, it's again not clear in, in theirs, uh, in their, uh, NR statutes. But they did say that most of the, um, state jurisdictions do require it to be at bid opening. But they do allow each jurisdiction to, um, make that decision on their own. And there are some that, uh, don't require it until the, uh, execution of the award. There was, uh, just for some other reference, um, there was, uh. The other bidder is, is obviously, uh, quite a bit higher and we were, we were in line with what was estimated for the project. The other bidder also, um, did not have a Lander County business license, uh, which, you know, may or not be required. But obviously could be obtained prior to awarding if that was, uh, required. So, um, I think it's a technicality that, um. That, uh, we've solved and, uh, I think that, uh, if we go back to rebid, it's not a close number. So it doesn't, it just delay the project and delay the use of the facility for, uh, events you guys have planned, so. Like that should be, uh, taken into consideration.
Well, since we're, it's kind of of a legal nature, um, because we definitely don't want to do anything that's not right or bring litigation on this bid project. So what do you think, Bill?
If you were truly worried about litigation, it could go either way because any, any lawyer would take either side of that case. Since it hasn't been decided, as he pointed out.
So the statute is not clear whether or not.
If he's comfortable with rebidding, I would rebid because usually you can't go wrong with that. Uh, having said that, if there was some rush or you're worried about the change in the numbers. Uh, one of the problems with rebidding is that his bid might go up since he knows the competition. You know, because everybody is gonna look at that, at those numbers and, and, uh, decide. Cause, you know, they've got really sharp pencils when they're doing it blind and they don't know what the other side's gonna do.
Well, I'm gonna, Donnie, I'm gonna go to you on it. What, what is, uh, what are your thoughts on it?
Well, um, we also had another issue. The bid did come in late. And we gotta follow the rules and I don't want to raise any feathers and I think just to be, keep everything on the up and up. I think we should rebid it. We, it might affect the pricing. I hope it don't. We cross our fingers, but just to keep everybody up where we should be.
Okay, and then it's not an emergency retrofit. I mean, what's it gonna, uh, set us back?
So timeframe wise, it does push us about a month. Um, we've worked with the Civic Center to try to coordinate with their cu- current, uh, bookings that they have. And we're right up against the wire. Um, right now, we'd be looking at a ninety day contract period stops around May twenty-seventh. And I think they have, uh, some things happening right around that day. So it'd be one of those things where the new contractor would have to be willing to work with us to. To, to get maybe some of those people in, uh, for their La Quinceañera or their, um, graduation, uh, parties. And we might have to stall the contractor, um, during those periods. So, uh, they also had opened up the rec center as a possible alternative. If we couldn't make that happen, so the county management and everyone has kind of made some accommodations to try to work this out. So timeframe wise, to answer your question, I think that we can make it happen.
Well, I propose that we just take it out for bidding.
Okay, so basically we'll just, uh, we'll just table, uh, number eight. And move forward as a direction. Have a good with everybody. Is there any, is there any public comment on the issue?
Just, just so the board knows, what I, what I've looked into and found here is that you guys are the owner of the project, so ultimately you guys can award it to whoever you want. And, and waive pretty much any of these, um. You know, time requirements like Donnie was speaking to, if somebody's showing up, if we have a mandatory bid opening at two and somebody doesn't show up at this board. So seeing to pick somebody that showed up at two fifteen, they could because you guys are the owner of the project. And the state is very respectful of this board and that's why there's been no decision on that is because you guys are paying for it. You guys make the final decision. So whichever way you guys win, I feel like you guys would be safe. Um, but I think the safest way, obviously, is just to rebid. Other than the fact everybody knows each other's numbers and we might see, uh, some small decreases or some, some increases.
Yeah, I think that's the biggest liability. I think you hit the head there is, these bids will be public. Everyone will see the other competitors' numbers and so you could see, I, I would expect an increase most certainly. And this is right.
We will see competitors' numbers if they weren't in on time?
It, it's public information, so these bids are available.
Yeah, we just write it into the record as well.
Yeah, and they're in your packet as well, so it's, it's, and so other contractors that didn't bid this project and have that opportunity can actually take. The legwork that these folks had done and, and try to jump on board. So that is one really sad part of the story is these guys have dedicated thousands of dollars. To these bids. This is a significant bid and so I know that, uh, it's a heartbreaking to hear on their end because there's, they probably put, you know, ten thousand into the project already, I'm sure.
So when we put it out to bid, we had a stipulation of when those bids were due.
Yeah, and, and their gal was actually in the public works office is what we were told. And so she ran up to the clerks and so I think this timestamp was a few minutes past two, two P M.
So we're just talking.
It was two oh-two and it was, and she was sitting in the public works office as opposed to the clerk's office. Our bids are open up there, so they're recorded at the same time.
Well, honestly, again, my concern would be potential litigation in front of the people who didn't get it, but it, it would just seem easier to approve the bid. I mean, I don't think it was intentionally, but I think it was just, uh, two minutes, you know, but again, I'm not an attorney.
Just so the, just so the commission knows, we did speak to the other contractor as well. We spoke to both contractors. They, they were the ones that raised the initial concern of, if the licensing was there. And, and then when they're, they didn't have any licensing as well, that was kind of like, well, everybody kind of messed up here. Um, nobody seems to be too concerned. They, they seemed like they were, they were off. I don't want to put words in their mouths, but, um, Aaron spoke directly to the owner of the company as well. Um, and it doesn't seem that there would be that kind of litigation coming. Um, and it doesn't seem that there would be that kind of litigation coming from the conversations we've had. But once again, the safe thing to do is rebid.
And we would have a say also once the bid come in, so it goes out to public knowledge. But am I wrong to say if Braemar stays tied with their bid and somebody else comes in at twenty thousand dollars less than the bid they did before? We would still have some say to say, this is, I, I mean, we still have a say to protect, so, or some within reason to, to say we.
That's, that's correct. You do not, you do not have to take the low bid if you've got a good reason, you don't have to take the low bid.
Aaron, thoughts?
I, I don't believe that's necessarily true, but I'm not an attorney. I have never seen a public works project not take the low bid. And I've never seen up the job. So that'd be new, new to me, so that, that's a new one for sure.
Well, and, and in the, like I said, I, I would have to agree with Bill and the research that I've done, this board has the ultimate authority. If you guys just said, you know, we just like these guys, they do great work for us, we're gonna go with them. Um, you're the owner of the project. You can do as you see fit.
Well, it boils down to like, we have judgment. It's like, why wasn't your bid this cheap to begin with? It's now this cheap because you've seen in public information, so it's like, that's why the discretion lies with us. We could, you know, so.
Hang on time, so I think I'll need to decide. I would rather have it go out prepared, so.
Yes, I might have to cut you short, uh, Rita, just, uh, real quick, because we have a public hearing at ten o'clock, so.
Okay, I'll just make it real quick.
Okay, come on.
Okay, Rita Rogers, Civic Center, and I've been working with these guys and I've been trying to schedule different things. So that we can still have, you know, profit coming into that Civic Center. And we do have a big one at the end of May, uh, because I thought we'd be done by then. And they're really concerned, you know, if we don't get this done by a certain time, they're out a whole lot of money. So, um, it's one of those things to think about. I mean, if this is not a big legal thing, uh, you know, um. Going out to bid, I don't know, for me personally, it, it's whatever, you know, Aaron and them decide. But, um, on my end of it, we're gonna have some very upset people. Whoever gets that contract doesn't get it done in time, it's, it's gonna be bad. So just wanna let everybody know.
Is the retrofit, is it needed for this event to occur? Is, could the project?
Oh, yes, this is a big quinceanada.
So the retrofit is needed for that?
Yes, the kitchen, all of that, that, that's all part of the whole building. And, and they, right now they've got about seven thousand into it. And when I told her, she's tried to get out of certain contracts, she can't, so that's where we're standing now on May twenty-seventh. So it's just one of those, you know. We, we were pretty sure we'd be done, we was hoping, you know, but then this little bitch came in and, um. But if, if this isn't a big thing and we can still go ahead with this, I, you know.
Mister Chairman, can we, can we come back to this discussion?
Yes, so guys, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna, we'll come back to this item. We're not done with it yet. We have to open up the public hearing exactly at ten o'clock here, so. Sorry for that. Okay, we'll move into item five, it's a public hearing. For discussion of possible action to modify and or approve, disapprove the adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh five. Adding new title five, chapter eighteen to the Lander County Code to include locksmiths and safe mechanic license and permits. Is there any discussion on it?
Need to mention something.
On page three of nine, um, you've got the application fee specified. And in general, that's not a good idea, um, because then you have to completely amend an ordinance. Uh, in order to change the fee.
Which paragraph are you talking about this?
Page three of nine, near the top, where it says application fee. You see that?
Um, let me see, application fee towards the top. I see the applicant shall complete that, no, application fee towards the top. You guys see where he's talking about?
No, I don't.
Oh, you're, so you're, are you talking, uh, paragraph B?
Yeah.
A bond submission of the application, applicant shall pay an initial application fee of blank dollars to cover the cost of the sheriff's process and investigation.
So what I would do is strike the fee and then, um, have it, I forget how I have it here, hang on, lost my page.
And Bill, what was your reasoning for striking that?
So that you can modify it by simple resolution, otherwise you've gotta completely change the ordinance every time you wanna modify a fee.
Oh, gotcha.
So in general, you shouldn't have fees in ordinances.
Okay.
So we just state they would pay an initial application fee. We don't have to put the amount.
Correct. I came up with something, I'm trying to, here it is. What I put down, the paragraph B would read, upon submission of the application, the applicant shall pay an initial application fee. Set by resolution of the commissioners to cover the costs of the sheriff's process and investigation.
Okay. Robert, did you have a public comment on it?
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Quick for the Sheriff's Office. Um, we had this discussion with, with the district attorney and it, it sounds reasonable to do this. I do wanna point out, there's actually two locations in the ordinance for, uh, application fees. One for the actual license and one for a locksmith per, or work permit. There's also two locations for, uh, reissuing of licenses and permits, so those would all have to be addressed in the same manner, if you choose to do that.
Okay, so do we wanna approve it based on those changes and have it come back and then we can ratify it, or how, how does that work with an ordinance? Or should we just?
You can, you could modify it right now and put it in. I didn't catch all of the others. I mean, Robert, do you know where they are real quick so that we can do an amendment?
Well, I think you've got.
They're on page four.
Yeah, page four of nine, uh, paragraph, well, it's halfway down, it's B.
Oh, yeah, I see, okay.
And also on five, that's mine.
Okay, tell you what, why don't I, um, quick come up with something and then somebody can make the motion with what I come up by. As to the item itself, you'll notice that when you read it in, it's that, it starts with the words modify or approve, disapprove. So there's been some discussion in the past, well, you can't modify it. Well, of course you can, it's right there in the agenda item.
Okay. So then do you, are you suggesting that we move on to business?
Yes, now let me, uh, draft something real quick with Robert and then, um, I'll make a suggestion.
And we can do that since, since it was a, a public hearing, you heard it ten, okay?
Well, because we're, we're coming back to it and the public is hereby notified, we're coming back to it, so.
But we can, we can do this one properly and then you can.
Well, yeah, you could do that.
You, you can do this one and have it handled properly.
Did we, so did we vote on some others that, that needed that change as well? No?
Well, the problem is it's all in the same item.
Okay.
So that's why I was suggesting you do something else for about five minutes. It won't take long.
Okay. Commission, are you pretty good with that? We'll just move back to.
And can you do that?
Yep.
It's a continuation. All times are approximate and it's a continuation. And if, you know, if somebody were gonna say, well, I didn't know you were gonna do that, um, if they were here, they would know. That's the whole point of the public hearing.
Uh, so we'll go back.
Yeah, so guys, we're gonna, we're gonna go back to number eight and then we will conclude the public hearing on five once we have a recommendation from our, our D A.
So the question I am sort of backing to this is that, I know this is very petty to say, but two oh two, unfortunately, two oh two, it matters, it's two oh two or two oh ten. It doesn't matter, it wasn't in on time and then, so I think you kick open a gate that you don't wanna kick open. And so that's, and I understand the quinceañera, but also I don't also wanna have something come back and buy this later, that on a bid being late.
That was a good point.
Yes, um, I was thinking about that. We went in, let me explain how this went down. We went in, we sat down, we didn't even open the other bid yet and looked up and she come up to, so we was running a little bit late too that day apparently, so. So it's not like we had the other one open in front of us, so.
I agree.
Yeah, it don't matter, absolutely. I agree, so.
And I, and I feel for the people who need their stuff done, but it doesn't matter if this one earns a fifteen billion dollar one, we just don't wanna open that door.
Okay, so with that said, and I, and I agree with you, Kathy, um, you said it pushes back thirty days, so taking that into consideration. And the construction time, can we have this thing done by May?
Uh, so there, so the original contract was really serious about timeframe, so it had a fifteen hundred dollar id, a day liquidated damages. So now with this new, if we do go back out to bid, we'd probably restructure that a little bit. We'd still hold the liquidated damages, but I think we'd have to give the contractor a little more leeway. Because I think we would be interrupting their construction at the end for, to maybe get some of these people in for their event. Um, but to answer your question, I think we can get everything done. It's still ninety days puts us at, no, May twenty-seventh.
Okay, so I have another question is, help me understand, uh, Rita, the, um, retrofit, you said it's needed before the event can take place. But we're currently doing events in there. What is, what is it with the retrofit that has to be done for them to have their event there?
Well, when you take and have a, they have to have the kitchen and that whole area because of their catering and, and, and all of that. So if that, if the kitchen is, uh, not done, then they would only have two thirds of that building to use.
But my point is, we have a functioning kitchen currently, right?
We do have one right now. Um, what it is, is, okay, so the public health has changed their laws. And what we can do at the Civic Center as far as bringing outside food in to serve to the public, okay? So as it is, this kitchen is nowhere near large enough. We cannot bring outside food in. Um, so that really puts us in a mind of a lot of different events. One of them was my bass club, uh, doing that, you know, dinner. We used to bring certain things in. Cause we don't have a kitchen big enough to fix all the food, but that's the new public health laws and stuff. So that's why I have stressed to make this a working kitchen. And then, uh, on the other end, I wanna put, it'll be like a drink station bar. But right now when we do a bar, we have to put tables out in front, so we take up a good portion of that building. Uh, if we do what, uh, we've got planned here, we're gonna have a bar put in there. They'll be on the other side, you'll roll it up, they'll serve the bar to the people. And then when they're done, they can roll it down and lock everything up and not have to worry about somebody breaking in or, you know, liquor or. And you have all of that out on the floor, uh, something that could happen.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying. I mean, uh, we have a crap fee coming in February, correct?
Yes.
Which is a very large event and we're.
That's why we, um, it is very large and we gotta have all of it for that happening.
But my point being is that would it be, what, I mean, it's like if, if for any reason we put it out to bid and the contractor says, I don't think I can make the time requirements. We don't start the bid. We make sure we get this quinceañera done, you know what I'm saying, and then we start the construction after that. That, this is, that's my thought process, so.
If I could just kind of explain this a little bit, so in, in your, uh, center there, you've got. I think the, the big areas cut into like three sections, if you, if you put the curtain wall across. Um, we're gonna close off one of those sections and that'll be our staging area for us to actually do all, to kinda protect dust and, and bring stuff in. And so once we start construction, um, you're gonna have no bathrooms, no kitchen, like everything gets demoed the first few days. And until it gets rebuilt, you're not, you're not really like opening it up for safe use and, um.
And that's not what I'm suggesting.
Whether it's, you know, whether it's pushed at the front or back, it's still gonna have to have, I mean, the ninety day timeframe that's in there. For construction right now is pretty tight for what we're trying to pull off. So there's a lot of stuff that has to happen in that, in that, whenever you start.
Yeah.
And so Ryan, so what I had diagnosed, at least gonna probably do this, I have scheduled March, April and half of May and half of February. Where I have nothing in there and I postponed it because we's gonna have this crap fee, you know, for the chamber. And I said, okay, then we can take and do your crap fee and then right after that, if we can take and start construction. Then we should be in the timeframe and I've got nothing scheduled in there, see, until the end of May. But if we go after May, I'm, I'm booked.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, I, I've got, in fact, in the month of June, I got three quinceañeras and a wedding, so, you know. Uh, but I have scheduled all of this time for construction. So we don't interfere with, you know, the community and their events and stuff like that.
How long does the bid have to go back out for repost?
It's a good question. So right now it's twenty-one days, so we actually have the free presses, literally with the advertisement in hand. Waiting on the decision of this meeting and then we would go forward with that advertisement. It's twenty-one days advertisement. Once we get the bids and the contractor is notified of that, he has ten days to get the contracts to us and things like that, after this commission awards that. So it really puts us in a really pinch because I think what it does is we wouldn't be back on your agenda till February twenty-third. And that is a problem, so the, uh, we're looking at trying to find ways to put it on the previous agenda. Uh, but it's, it's, it, the timeframe is a huge problem, I'm not gonna lie. Um, to get it done by May twenty-seventh is going to be very tough and contractually, the contractor's gonna be required with liquidated damages. So it just, it puts everything in a huge pinch. Um, if there was any way to move forward with the project, it would really help out. And it'd save a, a, a pretty significant amount of money for, for all parties involved.
Yeah, one more question. After the award of the bid, what was, if, if you were successful, what was the start date? I mean, what, if, if it was approved today, what were, what, what did the bid come in, the start date?
Uh, it would be ten days from today, cause you would be approving the contract, they have ten days to get the remaining contract documents to us and then they would start. So they had ten days to start the project.
Four thirty-one days right there if we, if we approve it on this.
Yep.
One other, uh, comment, uh, is a lot of the items going in here are not just off the shelf Home Depot products. So you got a bunch of kitchen appliances that are special order hood, uh, these big curtain walls. Um, and so until this is awarded, we can't order any of those specialty items. So we're also not just in the ninety days is, is a labor issue, it's more, how do we get all these products here in time?
So I was wondering supply issue, uh, change, you know, it's.
Yeah.
It's gonna be very challenging.
It is, it really is.
So, counsel, what, can you refresh what your statement was on us?
There are risks both ways. I can't give you absolute. If I were sitting in your seat, I would take the risk because you've got more problems. You could have a lawsuit either way, cause I'm, I'm a lawyer, I can take either side of that case, okay? Um, but strongly I think you're, you're fine, especially in this situation where the bids are so wide apart. I mean, what are they gonna say? That it was gonna be different somehow later? Give me a break.
Yeah.
We only have two bidders, right?
Yeah, and, and the composition of those bids is, is, these folks have a lot more in-house. Whereas if you look at the other bid, their list of subcontractors is significant. So you could see that the general is only taking on maybe thirty percent of the work, whereas these folks are taking on like eighty percent. So that's really the discrepancy between the two is we have a company that has mainly everything in-house versus another's that does not.
And the bid you said was turned into you, you had it physically in your possession before.
It, it's time.
But per the bid requirements, it required it to be turned into the clerk's office.
Instant, that's correct.
What do you guys wanna do? I'll hear a motion.
I am going to recuse myself because I haven't said a word and actually, um, I, I currently have employed Braemar Construction. They are doing some residential construction work and so, um, I am abstaining from the discussion and your votes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting that be known. Commissioners?
We have a timeline on this. I think we should go ahead and then award the bid.
Is that, you're gonna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we award the bid to, uh, Brenner Construction LLC in the amount not to exceed eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second the motion. Do I have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, okay, so it passes.
I don't oppose, but I am abstaining.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Bill, are you ready to move back into the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna go back into item five, guys, public hearing for discussion, possible action to modify and or approve, disapprove the adoption of ordinance twenty-two dash oh five, adding new title five, chapter eighteen to Lander County Code to include locksmith and safe mechanic license and permits.
My, my suggestion, as noted before, we found the four different places, and I talked with, uh, Robert Quick from the sheriff's office. My suggestion would be that you strike the, the language, and then I just go to the specific ones. Tell you what, Brian, if you don't mind, I'll make the suggestion, the easiest way for you, you folks to do it, it's up to you, obviously, you're the ones in charge, would be somebody to simply say so moved.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. All right, so, uh, this is under five eighteen oh five oh, uh, subsection B there. And I would recommend striking of, then the blank, then dollars, and in place putting set by resolution of the commissioners. Then moving to the next page, under five eighteen oh seven oh, again, B, where it says renewal fee, you strike in the sum of dollars, and you add in that same phrase, set by resolution of the commissioners. Then at the bottom of that same page, four of nine, under five eighteen oh eight oh, again, you s- strike the, uh, dollars and the blank, and after the word fee, you insert set by resolution of the commissioners. And I think there was one more, yeah, and then the next page, five of nine, under five eighteen, near the bottom of the page, five eighteen one twenty, under B, again, strike of blank dollars, and put in that same phrase, set by resolution of the commissioners.
And Billy, you also have one on page six and on page seven as well. Uh, page six is clear at the bottom.
Oh, okay, Robert, I missed that. Okay, strike of blank dollars, and put in the phrase, set by resolution of the commissioners, under five eighteen one four zero, B, and where did you say the other one was, Brian?
Five eighteen one five zero.
Okay.
Page seven.
I've got it, thank you, um, under five eighteen one five zero, uh, B, strike a blank, uh, strike blank dollar, and put in the phrase, set by resolution of the commissioners.
Okay, do we have a motion?
What's the fee gonna be, do we determine the fee, or?
That's, that will already set.
You do that later, um, I'll make a motion that we approve the adoption of ordinance two zero two two dash zero five, adding new title five, chapter eighteen to the Lander County Code to include locksmith and safe mechanic licenses and permits, uh, with, uh, the modification of our payment system to be, um, put forth by the commissioners by resolution and authorize our current DA to sign.
Do we have a motion and a second, do we have any public comment on the matter? Okay, call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pass unanimously. Okay, we'll move into item nine. Um, for discussion and possible action to approve, adopt, or modify policy and or procedures for the Lander County credit cards.
Hey, Commissioner, I'm sure you guys have heard a little bit about the credit card, um, so some, some backstory to this, and this comes back to when I started with the county a long time ago, we, uh, didn't have any credit cards, and then there were two credit cards, now I believe, I'm misstating when I say any credit cards, cause I believe the sheriff's office has always had a credit card, is my understanding, however, theirs was through a separate account, um, with the bank, and not coming through the county per se like they are currently. So when we did get cards, there were only two cards in the county, and I had one, and, uh, Donald had one for this end. And, uh, Grace Powery kept them in her office, anytime we needed them, we would call, check them out. Um, and when we got back, we checked them back in, and she put them back in her safe and kept tabs on all of the activity on them in the, as it went. So, coming back to where we are now, for the last four or five years, we've had findings, and one of the findings in our audit has been the credit cards. And we've tried different agreements and different avenues to try to remedy that. Long story short, we can't get it out of our findings because a lot of the receipts, um, end up missing or misplaced, and then, um, some of them are, are being purchased where you guys aren't actually seeing the backup, and long story short, the auditor just aren't buying anything, so the only thing that we've brought forward that the auditors think would remedy this problem is removing all the cards from the cardholders, and Lakin, um, would be the new grace, more or less, holding the cards, and then somebody checking them out and going through the process of the checkout process, where they say where they're going, what they're doing on a sheet, they check them back in with receipts for anything that's been done, and then that would be itemized out and, um, put towards their budget. Well, in, in trying to make that change, there's quite a few people unhappy with giving up their cards, they don't want anybody else to hold their cards. Speaking with Juicy, and Lakin can go further into this, the only option, the only other option we have is I believe the sheriff's office is currently looking to, um, secure their own card directly through the bank for some of the things that they do, cause they need one on hand at all times, and, uh, and then I believe convention and tourism, if I'm not, is that correct? Um, so I don't wanna speak for Paula on this, but I believe that they were looking at possibly, uh, securing their own as well, and they're the only two that can do that, everybody else has to go, the bank won't allow them to open their own card. Um, and Lakin can expand on what and why they can't open their own cards. Personally, I don't think that as the county manager, I have any business in an elected official's budget, and this puts me right in the middle of it with being the responsible one for these cards and the review of the cards. We have a couple of, uh, different issues right now that we're going through with, uh, purchases on these cards that, um, could potentially go into, um, legal matters later, if, if they're found to be fraudulent, so this is not a new issue, this is, uh, this is an issue that's ongoing, and by us removing these cards has caused quite a stir, but it's the only way that we can have no findings on our audit next year, um, which is most important to me.
Right.
I have something to say on the matter, so, um, you say you responsible, ultimately, it's just boards that's responsible, right? And if there's any area for impropriety to happen, it's with credit cards. And I don't understand why it's hard to turn in credit card receipts, I know back in two thousand and seven, when I served on this board, I think Ron had his own credit card back at that time, and there weren't many cards throughout the system, and now from my understanding, there's cards all through all departments. And for, if we're going to be responsible as a commission board, and we're getting dinged by our audit, we're tightening up controls, that's my opinion. It's like, you can't turn in your receipts, you turn your card in. It's, it's that simple, and if, if, uh, the elected departments, the ele- other elected officials wanna get their own card, that's fine, they're responsible for it, but not this commission. I mean, we've had an auditor now for five years, I could be off on how many times, four, five years, six years, that have dinged us on this exact issue. We're, it's time that we correct the problem.
I, I thought we had actually, when, when we took the last steps, that was the last year, and we said, if they don't turn in receipts, they pay for it themselves.
I don't think that's happening.
There have been, there have been some payments, myself included, I've lost a couple of receipts and I've, uh, had to pay out of my own pocket, but it does not answer for the audit. Um, the auditors don't, don't think that that is the, the proper answer, is finding a lost receipt.
You know, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with whatever we need to do, um, as long as the sheriff's office and convention and tourism is separate, cause they run entirely different show, so, um, yes, uh, but I would question, um, the credit card that, uh, we hold for the South. And I'm saying that would be very, very difficult, so I don't know how else we could do that, um, uh, when there's something that we need, I mean, I could buy it personally and then get reimbursed, I guess, but sometimes it, it runs into other things at the last minute where, where you get snowed in and I'm somewhere else, and yes, I use the credit card. I have never ever not turned it in on time or a receipt, but that's not the point, the point is, is there another way that we can, uh, maybe, does Roden Bridge use it, maybe, maybe we could have, maybe the office down there sign it out to us? If they did, we'd have to do a, a lot more, I mean, we'd have to have some kind of a safe or something. Uh, we don't have anything, we have a drawer that locks, but I don't think that would be good enough for, for credit cards if we, if we consider letting the South do their, um, receipts, checking in and out down there, rather than up here.
I have something to say, cause I was the one that asked to put this on the agenda, and I respect where Bert's coming from, and he should not be the one in the middle. The elected official who is holding that card is ultimately, should ultimately be responsible for it. We put into policy to have them responsible, the biggest issue is that the receipts don't get turned in to us, so they, whatever is charged, we have no idea what's being charged, and I look at it in a broader scheme as punishing everyone for the few that are doing it wrong, and that's something about that just rings, uh, wrong with me. And I, I understand both sides, but that elected official ultimately, if they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing with their credit card, when it comes back to budget time, then we have say, if they cannot do their budget right, and they cannot do their credit cards right, then we take it away from that one person, and it shouldn't be Bert's responsibility, it should be the elected official's responsibility, and we've gone to policy that we really haven't ho- held them to task that when they don't, um, and every, their receipts should be turned in so we can see what it is they're purchasing with these, instead of it just being a credit card bill, because if they're putting stuff on there that they're not supposed to be, they're a little less likely to be doing that if we're looking at what they're purchasing, and I think that's a huge issue, and I know it's a bigger, makes a bigger issue, but I hate punishing everyone for a few.
So I, I just think we have a policy, we have a policy, it's, if it's good for these, good for everybody, and it's, uh, it is, um, and you, you said it exactly, it's, it's, it's under our control, but I don't see the credit cards, we should have an itemized bill run sheet on what was spot, so if we have a question, we can say, hey, what was this item for in this department, and they should have to answer for it on the public record, and if we don't have that authority, or we can't control it somehow, then it, cause it used to be under the control of the treasurer, the credit cards did, right?
Yep.
I used to be able to see the bill.
So one other thing I'd like to add to the credit card that I don't think everybody's looking at, our bills are anywhere from twenty to fifty thousand dollars a month that are billed on these credit cards, and we're paying taxes on all that.
Yeah, that's a good point.
We're, we're, we're a tax exempt entity, if we set up accounts, we don't pay taxes, but if we run that card, we pay taxes. That, that, if, if I was running it as a private business, I would not be happy about paying taxes on something that I shouldn't be paying tax on, just out of a matter of setting up an account, so whichever way you guys choose to go, I'm, I'm good, I just want it either well known in this meeting that I'm trying to clean this up for our audit purposes, and, and I'm good with whatever, whatever direction we choose, I know that, that the sheriff's office needs to have theirs for, you know, all the stuff that they do, and I know that Paula needs to have hers for everything that she does, and she answers to her board. Um, the rest of them have to either come through Juicy or through me by, per the bank, it's not something that.
So let me ask, so Ron, you can get your own credit card through your department, right, to where?
We're working on it as we should.
Okay, good, and Paula, you can do the same through your board, can they get their own credit card?
No, because our money is deposited within the county, and the county hasn't made a separate account, so our money is mingled, and so, um, to the bank, it doesn't look like we technically have any money, um, because it is mingled, so either we create a separate account that our deposits go into, or, um, we just continue with this credit card for now.
Okay, thank you, and Bert, what you're proposing is that the credit cards are turned in on a daily basis, and when somebody wants to come in and, and get them, they pick them up to do their business, and when they come back, they turn their credit card in with the receipts, if the receipts don't come, the card's canceled or shut off.
Correct, so, so there's two, two things, there's, it's a couple prongs to it, is Lakin would hold all cards. Uh, myself and Lakin would have access in case somebody, but anything that you need a card for, typically you know that you're, you're going to a training, you're going somewhere, so you'd go in, and we have a sheet that we've already built, and we sent out by email to all the elected officials that have cards, um, that they would just fill out saying, you know, on the seventeenth, I'm headed to, to Atlantis, and this is what I'm doing, and then when they come, they'd come check out their card, they go to Atlantis, do all their, when they come back, they'd hand that in with the, with their receipts to Lakin, and then that would be part of the packet that we give to the auditor. Um, anybody that would, because this has been brought up, that they'll just take a picture of their card, and then they can use it when they want. So any card that came back with charges on it that wasn't checked out through Lakin would then just be canceled. Because we aren't following our process, and, and we almost have to make it that strict because without making it a public showing of what a wreck these credit cards are, I mean, we have some charges that are going on these things that would, that would blow everybody's mind, and nobody gets to see them because, because you guys aren't reviewing these, the auditor's seeing them and going, hey, we have a problem. You guys have a policy, but you have a problem, and this is the resolution to your problem that we would accept, and that's what the auditor said is, is a good resolution to this, um, and then hopefully Lakin can add on to, she hasn't said much.
I do have, I do have public comment when you're ready to on the computer.
Lakin Sullivan for the record, so I did, um, reach out to a couple other counties to see how they handle their cards, and uh, three out of the four that I spoke with, um, their commissioners have the sole discretion of who receives a card, they have to be approved. They have to go in front of the commission and justify why they want it, um, and they do not issue them to anyone but elected officials or department heads. Their limits are much smaller than ours, um, they can only have like a thousand to fifteen hundred limit, unless it's the road department or the sheriff's department, they can go up to five thousand, um, if they want a credit increase, so limit increase, they have to go in front of the commissioners to ask that. Um, but all of the counties I spoke with, the treasurer and the finance department manage the cards, the county manager has nothing to do with it. Um, so that, I think, speaking with Juicy, she couldn't come in today, but she's on board giving it back to the treasures department, um, so the elected officials and the sheriff's office and, uh, convention tourism can keep their card. Um, Bert has said regardless of what happens, he's still going to make his department heads turn their cards in, and they have to be checked out. But I think that would solve the problem, and then Juicy agrees that we need to have a tighter policy, and it needs to be more strict, so we will be redoing that and then bringing that back in front of you guys.
So if the treasurer wants to be responsible for that's one thing, but if it's his commission, and if there's two cards that need to go out, I want a part of our bill run. I wanna see that credit card statement.
So I was gonna tell you.
So I can look at the items, and I can ask questions.
Regardless of what happens, um, the credit card statements, all individual card statements will be put in the backup for you guys to review.
I, I have a question, this wouldn't change just doing things by vouchers, like in my past, because frankly, the goofy credit card is a pain to me, it's worth it to me to take my own personal credit card, do the county business, then put in for reimbursement.
Because you're having, there's a paper trail, that's the whole problem, is receipts are not being turned in, how can they say that it's for business or that it's impropriate?
And if. And if, if I don't turn it in, that's my problem.
Right.
I think the biggest issue, in my opinion, is, is people have such high limits on their cards, and so they're just using it for convenience, and they're bypassing accounts payable. And so I think if we lower those limits down, and they have to, if it, if we have them as a vendor in the system, then they need to get a invoice and go through accounts payable, but for travel or emergencies or stuff like that, then.
Well, maybe we need to increase our policy on the matter, if, if we lower the limits, and there's a certain dollar amount that we force them to set an account up with the entity, so we're not paying tax, because there's no reason why we should be paying tax, and every time we do a credit card transaction, we're paying tax, we shouldn't, I mean, that's a waste of taxpayers' dollars.
Well, not every time, because I have, I have ordered things in the Austin office, and we always show our tax exempt or whatever, and come back, but it's not one that's automatic.
So it's an out of step, you.
Right, but if you pick up something at Walmart, I mean, we're, we're not there tax exempt with Walmart, and you do pay tax. But when you, when you explode it to this kinda money, um, it's way out of line, absolutely, I agree, but I thought we had like a, a limit of, what, a thousand dollars on our card or something?
I've, I've since brought everybody's card down to twenty-five hundred, but there were a lot of ten thousand dollar limits, there were, and these were limits that were set previous to me, coming in, so these.
Yeah.
I thought, I thought ours was only a thousand for our commissioners.
I believe you're at twenty-five hundred, um, but the, uh, if, if you guys don't mind, I, I would like if you guys move this over to Juicy, and then maybe we have everybody come in here before this commission and, uh, and, and get act- And then maybe we have everybody come in here before this commission and, and, and get access given to them for a card. I think that my department should only have one card personally, and that should be checked out through Lakin and for the proper purposes and, you know.
So Bill, if we do that, then the responsibility falls, falls, falls on the treasurer, right? To make sure that there's no funny business going on. She would be the one doing the audits and...
Yes.
She would get the individual statements and the backup turned into her. As she is right now, she, that's already happening. And she goes through it and then does the voucher for all the GL accounts, that all the expenses need to come out of. And then she gives it to me, and I double check it and enter it into the system.
Did we have public comment online?
Denise, Kayla, go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, this is Judge Fortune, Denise Fortune for ARJ, Justice Spark. I apologize, I'm not there. I am fully in Torino as we... The email front bird, I reached out to Lakin and I turned my card in. But I have a couple of issues with it, and whenever you guys decide, I, I will go along with it. I work every day of the week, every single day, every day of the week. I, I, I am one of the elected officials that have never not had a receipt turned in. So I agree with Kathy, we're all getting punished for something that may have happened in another entity. Okay, so I, I don't agree with that, because there's never been a problem with mine. I do travel a lot. I worry, I travel a lot for judicial council meetings, I travel a lot for justice courts. It's all mandatory. I worry, I'm going to forget to go get...
Are you there?
Are you now? I'm in Las Vegas or Reno or wherever I'm at for five, six, seven days, and I don't have my credit cards because I forgot to go check it out. My other issue is, I, I'm about to leave on a trip, I forget to go check it out, I run down to check it out. What if person I need to check it out from?
What was the question?
Well, if the person that she needed to check it out with wasn't there, then what does she do?
There, there's someone available in the office to do it at all times.
There's precedent, Sparks UniCourt versus Sparks, but the, because that's an independent branch, the court is, that she should be able to get her own credit card and have her own setup. I would hope she would check with the auditors so that she doesn't have things off. But I mean, if push comes to shove, she probably can set something up. And if, and with amount of travel, she's correct, because the courts have to get things done within forty-eight hours frequently. So, and plus you got search warrants, which have to be done minute by minute. That is telephonic search warrant for drawing blood for DUIs. There are all kinds of reasons where if she's traveling or what have you, she needs to be able to use a card. So I would think you could set up something separate for the court, the way you have in fact for the sheriff's office.
So it's, in my opinion, if we're gonna transfer it to the treasures office, it's a mute point on the elected officials and discussing them turning their cards in, because they wouldn't have to at that point if you guys are okay with it. Elected officials would keep their cards, and they would not have to turn them in to anyone. But Juicy would oversee the backup and all of that stuff.
And the backup that we would want to have come to us also, so...
And the only reason that the elected officials were asked to is because it was under Bert, and he, you know, he's responsible for it. And he, this finding falls on our department, so, but if we switch it back to the treasures office, we would not ask the elected officials to turn their cards in at that time. They would keep them.
I'm fine with that, because I know that Grace always did it before, and so that's, and it used to come in, they used to have to turn in all of the backup to the commissioners, so you could see what they were doing.
And we will start doing that.
Yeah, it's just a good oversight, so, yes.
I just have a comment. When I use my credit card online or in stores, I just take our tax exempt paper in, and we set up an account there, so all my purchases are tax exempt as well. So I carry that with me.
That's good.
So I have a little card from Walmart, I'm tax exempt, and wherever we do our shopping. But like for us, during our charter tournament, sometimes, you know, we have a pretty large bill. So I don't know, but I know on the taxes, you can remedy that with just going to the company itself and showing your tax exempt information, and so your purchases would be tax exempt.
Thank you, Paula. Mike?
What's the consequence? I mean, so it's an elected official that it sounds like these audits keep busting. Without an oversight, what would be the consequence, even if the commission's up here reading it? I mean, what can we do to another elected official, because they turned it in there, and they're getting this thing down?
You, you can, you can cancel their cards. We are not required to give them a credit card. So you guys can cancel their card if they're not following the policy.
So if we keep, so what you were saying is if we keep it, we go to the treasurer and put this under the treasurer, we're gonna get the bills up here to, we'll, we'll start getting them in the packet to review, and if there's an ongoing one, that will become an agenda item to...
Well, we can just, we can question it. If we, again, it's, we're, we're, we control the purse, right? We're responsible for taxpayers' dollars. So it's like, and that's where it's always kind of concerning me, is that we're using these credit cards. There's purchases being made, and if there's ever foul play, is, are we, can we be held liable or responsible for that as a commission board, Bill?
Well, yeah, they had a, I don't remember if we actually went to any trial stuff, but there was a county commissioner in Esmeralda County at the time I became Esmeralda DA that was still in play, who had in fact used the credit, county credit card for her own personal use. And she paid the consequence. She had, she did resign rather than face stuff. And I don't remember what the outcome was for, as far as criminally, but she was facing all of that.
I just, I just think this board, if we're trying to do the right thing and be transparent and, and, and work with our auditors to where we have a clean financial audit, we're, we're in the right direction. And I know it used to always be under the treasures, and how, what the, what the background was of how it got switched from that, I'm not sure. But I'm completely okay with that idea going back to the treasures.
Yeah, and the other counties, if they, if they miss their backup one time, they get, you know, warning, and the next time they lose their card, and they don't get it.
They're used to report too.
Yeah.
I'm used to a system of checkout, so like I said, I don't see the errors in private system. I mean, it puts the load on, on Bert, of course, but then we know where to go. I mean, I'm used to a little bit different system. I'm learning this piece of it is more burden on them. But I like to, I mean, I like to check out system, because you don't, you don't have it, because you get a couple forms, you know. And also with this big, with this big size of the department, I mean, between Bert and his department heads, they also know what we have. Let's get into the surplus piece. If somebody wants to buy ten chairs between the department sends or in a basic discussion, hey, we have extra chairs, should that saves another cost of going out, somebody just buying that meal at Walmart or, or Office Max or, or whatever. So, I mean, that's just my opinion. I'm supportive of whatever, because I'm new to it, but...
With that being said, we have actually no control over the elected officials, however, over these cards. So I think if they go back into Juicy's office where they're supposed to be, and we can have the string, have the, tighten the strings and deal with that. They're elected officials, they should be old enough to be knowing better to do what they're supposed to be doing and turn in their receipts. And if we have a problem with that, we take it up with that person and remove the card. And it should have never went under Bert. And I know why it went under Bert, but it doesn't really matter at this point. But it needs to go back under Juicy, and they need to be held accountable, so not everybody's punished.
Yeah, and she's, she's okay with taking that back on, so...
I have a, a comment though on us looking over all of the, the bills and receipts. And I can just see if we've, if we've got ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars a month on these bills.
We should be having that much anyway. That, that needs to be dropped down.
Well, hopefully, but I still would like to save a tree, I'm sorry. So could we just have, have her put it together, and then we can go in and look at that at our convenience?
Yeah, I mean, you guys think...
I mean, rather than, I don't, I don't want to be getting them every month and having all this to go through.
They should not be spending that like that anyway. That needs to be brought down like the other counties do.
Well, hopefully, but, but I want to say it now, that, that I don't think each, each, each of us should have the whole, the whole information packet. I think there should be a packet that we can stop and go over and go through.
So not put it in the commission package?
No, no.
I would like to see it in the, in the backup for each of you commissioners to always, to, yes, to, just as part of payment of bills. I mean, so you guys can review each purchase.
Yep.
Because I think that's important and accountable.
I can tell you why, I can tell you right now, well, I'm gonna tell you right now why it's important to do that. It's because our former sheriff that went to prison, they didn't have it in the backup. And if it wasn't for me catching that, nobody would have known any better. So it needs to go in the backup, and not saying anybody's doing anything, but that's what happened last time.
Okay, but my point is, we need to look at it, but why, why can't we save a tree instead of all of us getting this paperwork? Why can't we just...
So what, what we can do is we can put the main credit card statement that has every purchase or every card on it. It will say the name of the place that it was purchased at and how much. And you can see it that way in your packet, and then if you want to look at the backup, similar to how you do with the check stuff, you can come and actually pull the receipt and look at it.
If you can do that, I'm fine with it. I, I mean, I just know when I send things in, sometimes they're five and six, seven, eight pages. And that's just one, you know, one me. And what about all the rest of them? I don't, like I said, I, I don't want to do any more with all the copies, so, okay.
Yes, Amy Nelson, one other control you may consider, because like Mike, I'm used to always doing checkouts. We had hundreds of employees, and we just knew if we were gonna travel or buy anything, we went and checked it out. This is a moving of cheese, but once you get used to this program, we also had, as we checked it out, a tax exempt card that was in there. And I don't know if it was because of an audit, or it was just good practice, because we were, you know, stewards of the taxpayers' money. But if we did not do our tax exempt prior to purchase, wherever we went or however we did it, we ate the, we paid, we didn't get reimbursed for the tax. Because it was on us to know, we're an tax exempt organization, it's on us to let Walmart know when we're checking out, we're tax exempt, or do it through online. And then if the bill came in and, and there was a tax, we didn't get reimbursed, it was our responsibility. So that's another good control. It may have even been an audit finding, I can't remember. Why are we, why are we reimbursing people for taxes when we're a tax exempt? So that's something to consider in your controls.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you. So do you want us to just do up a new credit card policy and then bring it back in front of you guys?
Yeah, do we need to make a motion to that effect, Bill, or can we just give direction?
Well, you, if you, if, she's just gonna redo it, just direct her to...
Okay.
I, I think that we need to put it on Juicy, if you don't mind.
No, that, no, that's, I think that's the consensus here, yeah? Is to give the credit cards back to our treasurer?
Liz has drafted, drafted it up before, but, so I think just me, Liz, and Juicy working together, we can get it done with how it needs to be done, and then it will be Juicy's responsibility from then on.
So are we making any other exceptions for the South?
I, I mean, you could keep yours, because you're an elected official, but we have other department heads down there that have them, and that would be up to Bert. They're his department heads.
Yeah, they're all turning theirs in, but...
Okay, so, so as commissioners, we are keeping ours?
I don't have one.
I don't have one.
Am I the only one?
Yeah.
Okay, and I can keep mine?
Yeah, because you're the one.
All right, thanks.
Okay. Is there any more public comment on the issue? All right. So we'll move into, actually, let's take a ten minute break.
This conference will now be recorded.
Um, we'll move into item ten. For discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the contract renewal between Lander County and Aspire Grant Solutions LTD. Terms of this contract are from January first, twenty twenty-three, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, in an amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand. And actually, sorry, guys, I was reading the wrong one. Let me go back up here. Uh, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove McKinley and Associates to provide professional services to assist Lander County with technical reviews of the EIS for the Robertson Mine Expansion Project with an estimated amount of twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars.
All righty, Commissioner, I think that Ms. Pam Harrington had brought this to our attention with some of the dewatering going on that may affect their residents over here in, is that Trout Creek? Trout Creek, yes.
Yes.
Um, and so I also have a, um, contract that's sitting in the DA's office. Bill's gonna review for us with, with Pam to also assist in this review, and her, her price is much cheaper. Um, but Dwight Smith has done all of our water rights for Lander County for years, and he's since joined with McKinley and, and Associates and does great work. So that's why I reached out to him, said, hey Dwight, is this anything you guys could do? And they do the whole gauntlet, they do from top to bottom on these reviews. When I got the number back is, surprised me. It's, it's an awful big number. But then again, I am not familiar with any of these EIS reviews, and think that we probably need some of the experts in the field. I'm not sure Jake Tibbetts does this for Eureka and makes recommendations of their commission, but he's hired on full time with, with the county.
So my question is, number one, have, have we ever done this before that you recall, Kathy, where we've paid an amount to overlook any...
And I wondered where we were, because the last I heard was, was we asked for an extension to at least, you know, give our information to them, and I don't know what happened since then. So if they're coming in from top to bottom, and we're already halfway through or more, why are they getting that kind of money? So I mean, I, I would like to know where we are before we even think about it.
Well, yeah, it's just, that's a large amount of money.
Yeah.
And, and, and I feel like, in, in a way that is, they're, they're gonna do what they're gonna do anyway, and it's just not a...
I, I, I agree. I want our input. I want to be at the table, but I don't think we're gonna make a whole lot of difference. Even, I'll take a little bit of difference, but maybe we can do it a less expensive way.
Well, the, the, I think that, where are they on the environmental impact study on this? Are they almost finished with it? Where are they?
No, they haven't made it to public yet. So this is, this is not to the public comment period yet. This is for the stakeholders. So these are for the counties and the other parties that are involved, the government entities per se that are getting to comment right now.
Well, can, since you said Pam's gonna work with our DA and at least take a look at where we are before we jump into something like this?
We can do anything, Miss Commissioner. Well, the thing too, is if we start getting in, like, second, going, having somebody go over to all these environmental impact statements, and you're paying, I mean, that's a large amount of money.
Where, where do we stop? There's so many of them that we, that we like our comments, yeah.
Well, this is where the prob, this is where the problem lies, you guys. When you don't get in the middle of these impact statements is for, just like the, we were having the with Bert's, I gotta think of the name of the verse.
Sayjen.
When you're not paying attention to that stuff, the impact of that, those things are happening, when it comes around threefold to bite you, it's gonna cost us a lot more when we, when they shut down everything because we didn't pay any attention to the impact study to make sure people were doing what they were supposed to. Not only that, when the BLM did the one for the extension on Marigold, they didn't, they didn't notify us. They notified Valmy. We're within fifteen miles of that, and they are dewatering like crazy. And it didn't, we had no knowledge that they were doing that. So you, people better pay attention to, and I'm not saying that sarcastically, that's just the tone of my voice, so that's sorry. Better pay attention to the impact, these impact statements, because they're, they're, these agencies aren't being held at toe saying, okay, we knew it was gonna do this much of damage, what are you doing to prevent it? Well, fifteen years later, nobody's paying attention to what they said. Well, you're not gonna have any water, because nobody's being held accountable and made to stop doing what they're not supposed to be doing. So my suggestion is, we either find somebody like Jake Tibbetts, or it costs a lot less money, and he's a wonderful, we try to find someone his caliber, because there's a lot of impact studies that come down the road, or we're gonna get bit in the behind when they come back and they put that sage grouse back on the endangered species list, because I believe eventually that's what's gonna happen, because the right hand is not paying attention to what the left hand is doing. And that's just my suggestion.
So Commissioner, we, we, this is kind of the precursor to hiring a Jake Tibbetts. We don't have it in the budget to hire that currently. And the twenty-nine thousand is very cheap compared to a full time Jake Tibbetts. By the time you pay...
But it's only one issue.
Yes, this is only one issue, but we don't have it currently in the budget to put somebody in a position like that. So we have to do something between now and budget, if you guys would like to do anything at all. And that's kind of the, the solution to the problem we have right now. If you guys would like to be at the table on this one, because I can tell you that nobody in my office or myself have any knowledge on these environmental impact studies, and they're so big that we could do anything...
That's why, and I, it was actually Pam that brought us to our attention, because we weren't even at the table. They didn't even invite us. That's why, no, I, it was actually Pam that brought us to our attention because we weren't even at the table. They didn't even invite us. Um, so we, we started out, but rather than this individual, and I hate to set a precedent because we've got so many, so many things that we need to be at the table for. Um, so for right now, I'd like to just see Pam and our DA kind of keep us on track of what we can do and, and I know she'll help us even formulate the letters of whatever.
Who's that?
That woman that came in.
Oh, one of the property owners out there?
Yeah, mm-hmm.
That has experience with it.
And, because I just, I, I hate to start a precedent on this right now. I do. But, but we need to be there. I mean, I don't want to say that it's not important. It's very important. That's why we're addressing it, but I think we should address it right now with Pam and the DA to kind of guide us through.
Okay, and I'm not sure, maybe Dwight Smith is on, online, um, and maybe he would wanna comment on some of this because I may not be representing very well for him here. Dwight, are you there? No, Dwight?
Nope.
So I will say that in the past, you know, we have done a lot of, uh, you know, hiring outside, maybe not particularly for this kinda thing, but we've done a lot of hiring out to kind of get some recommendations. I'm hoping to get Jake Tibbetts over here in front of you guys and, and give us kind of what his job entails and the importance of it for Eureka County and maybe some of the benefits and for consideration before we come in front of budget to hire a position for that.
I, I think all the commission, um, from years past were still interested in hiring somebody in a position like that. We just haven't had anybody that we can find so far.
Well, I know that Keith had brought that as a budget item in the past and it was, uh, and never could get it passed, but I don't know that we had some of these expansion projects happening at that time that, you know, had the attention on it that we do currently. Okay. So, no motion? So we're moving on? Okay. Item eleven, uh, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the contract renewal between Lander County and Aspire Grant Solutions. Uh, limited terms of this contract are from January one, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, in an amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand and eighty-five dollars. All righty, I'm sure the commission is aware of Holly Ellis. She's, uh, been writing grants for us. So a couple of accomplishments that she's had recently.
Muted. Unmuted.
She got us a couple cars for the senior center, um, got us a seventy thousand dollars roadside fuels break for the BLM. And then we have a few that are laying in the wake, waiting to apply for because we came in at the end of the application period. And so when they reopen, now that we have our packet kind of together how to apply, um, she can start applying for them other ones. But we have had some successes, um, that have far outweighed the price to have her on board.
Is this, so this is the same lady that was handling it before?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and I think that's important. I mean, you, you said it, Bert, was that we're hiring these people to do this job. What are, what are we gaining from it? And I, I know we've been successful as quarter group, uh, with Vincent. Uh, she's done very well here, Holly. Uh, we need to kind of take that approach, I think, with all these people that we're hiring and sending this money. It's like, what are you bringing to the table? And if they're not, you cut bait, right? It's just, it's a waste. That's kind of like back on that EIS thing. I think it would be, that's one of those things, you know? What's, what's our, what's our return on money spent, but?
So when we hired her the first time, we hired her for six months?
Correct.
So this is just a renewal, basically, if we wanna continue?
Yep.
And she handles the grants all the way through?
Yeah, she's been assisting us with everything. Now, uh, some point they fall back on, mainly on Laken, um, for the reporting requirements, which showing where we spent the money, how we spent it, make sure that it follows the, the terms of the grant. Um, but yeah, she's been babysitting us through the whole process and we're, we're learning as we go.
Well, you're the one that's been working with her, so we don't know that she's doing all that, is what I'm saying, so.
Oh, yes, no, and that's why I'm kind of reporting, you know, like the wages over there at the senior center. She's getting some wages covered over there for a year's worth of wages. The two cars that, that we purchased, one is already here. Um, so them, them came without being on the budget. They're just, they're grant money that has funded for this, so it's been good.
She's also helping us get our E-rate back for the library, too, because we lost that when we switched to county ran. So she, we're in the process of getting that back.
I think that with that, next time when that's brought to the table, if we have a list of what she's done for us, um, then it's easier to swallow what to pay for, to say, you know, show, and this is, she, in this grant, she did this for us in this grant. Not to give you guys a ton of paperwork, but just at least a list of what she has done.
Oh, you bet.
On the table, please.
Put it in the backup for you guys, everybody. You got it. Do we have any public comment on the item? All right, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract between Lander County and Aspire Grant Solutions LTD. Terms of this contract are from January first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, in the amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand eighty-five dollars.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 As she's unanimously. Um, item twelve, correspondence reports, future agenda items.
Um, one thing I would like to see on, I, I would like to know where our library is, and so I would like some kind of a report on that. And I know, um, that there's been some changes. I know we've been buying a lot of books, and I don't know, like, who has the authority to buy all the books and what kind of books we're getting? And, and are we using some expertise outside, um, you know, to help us? I'd really like to know what in the world is going on.
Have you been over there to see what our new employee has done to that library? It's in, it's incredible. She has done a wonderful job.
Yeah.
It's, it's, she's done a wonderful job, so it's worth people going over and taking a tour and seeing what she has done.
That's worthy of update. Okay, nothing more? Okay, we'll move into public comment. For non-agenda items only, persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make.
Excuse me, back, back on the agenda items?
Yes.
We, we did have some because, um, in our correspondence, we have the information coming in from.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Our Department of Water. And, um, that needs to be on the agenda. Laken's aware of that.
We haven't received all of the letters yet, which is the all, but we usually put it on the first receipt of being in February.
So it should be, it should be coming up soon.
Yes.
We don't, us paying the bills for everybody, you know, and then charging everybody, yeah, so that was one. Um, and, um, let's see, oh, the Humboldt River Basin for the extra fifteen hundred.
Yep, we got that one, okay.
And, and I have another one that I would like us to consider sometime. I would like.
I would like to see us do an employee survey, and I would like to have it done by a third party. I think, um, I think the input is so important, and when you talk to people that are unhappy in their, in their positions or their jobs at any other company, the companies usually want that input to see what we can do to rectify that so that they're happy. Because if they're happy, morale goes up, they're positive, and that's the whole point. So, um, my experience in the corporate world is that we always did surveys. But to start out, we may think about doing annual surveys by ourselves later or something like that. Um, but I do think, to start with, I'd like you to look into some third parties that might do that for us so that everybody feels really comfortable about giving the information.
Can't you do that with Survey Monkey? You can do that and save yourself a lot of money.
No, no, I, I don't wanna do that.
I know, but you want to know and, and understand how Survey Monkey works before, before you just assume that it's something that's programmed and go buy someone.
I do know how, how Survey Monkey works, and yes, I'm, I'm very, very concerned about the third party right now. Like I said, we can do that continuously if, um, if we decide we don't do it year after year. But I'd like to put it on the agenda so we can discuss it.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I'm Martha Sam for the record. Uh, I don't know how you can survey employees for happiness or unhappiness because you work for an elected official. The only person that you answer to in your job is that elected official, period.
That's a good point.
And when you start getting into elected officials' personnel place, you might find yourself in a little bit of hot water with that because they are their employees, not your employees.
No, um, I understand what you're saying, and I know other counties have done this, and part of it is, well.
What value is that? Of what value is that when they're elected? They're not gonna.
So we're not having discussion on the issues? It's just public comment?
It is just public comment.
Yes, okay. Thank you for your comment. And, and one thing I will caution the commission, and this is just, um, there is day-to-day operations. Um, you know, so we have to make sure we don't, we don't venture into that, but I, but I will put it on the agenda. We'll discuss it. Thank you. Okay, any other agenda items? Okay, good. We'll move into public comment. Everybody good? Okay. For non-agenda items only, persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any non-agenda item out of the board meeting, if any, and discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person, again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comments based on, upon time, place, and manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Do we have any public comment?
Hello again, Commissioners. Aaron Martinez, AM Engineering for the record. I just wanted to make a comment. February seventh, it will be our next, uh, Austin Town Hall meeting. Um, we are ahead of schedule with the project. We had committed to, uh, everyone receiving maps, um, by the end of the year or hitting the mail. So all those, uh, owners have, um, been mailed their maps, and so we're pretty excited about that. We're ahead of schedule about a year, and so we're looking for the remainder of the year to be, uh, pretty much going into finalization with those owners and then doing recordation of the maps. Uh, we spoke with, we were out in Salt Lake City yesterday, speaking with one of the larger landowners, Austin Resources. Uh, he was in full agreement of everything that we've proposed, uh, so we're pretty excited. And I just wanted to let you guys know that, uh, we're ahead of schedule or as committed, and we're looking that, uh, the remainder of twenty-three, we're gonna start recording some maps. So I think by March or April, uh, you should see that. The next step is we're gonna be bringing to you and the planning commission some vacation of right-of-way applications and things like that. Uh, so this thing is moving forward quickly, and, uh, I look forward to bringing that back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more public comment? Okay, motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I'll suck it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Muted. This conference is no longer.